The next item is item number three, application for a binding report in the Borough of Manhattan, docket number 15-5394, block 73, lot 10, 11 Fulton Street in the South Street Seaport Historic District. A contemporary market building designed by Benjamin Thompson and Associates and built in 1983. This is an application to alter the ground floor, replace storefronts, and signage. This was last presented on April 29.
Michael, thank you.
Commissioner, I'm Jerry, and I'm from the preservation staff. This is an application for 11 Fulton Street. As I said, this is to modify the ground floor infill to remove and replace it and to create sort of a treatment for the glazing at the second floor and to install some additional blue stone pavers. It was presented on April 29. There were comments about the variety of storefront infill, which perhaps each elevation should have a different configuration. There were some comments about the thickness of the blue stone and wanted to see some additional materials about the lighting scheme at the second floor. So the applicants are back at least quite far.
Okay, the hearing open, motion, second, okay.
Good morning, Commissioners, Elise Quaysbart. Thank you for having us back today. The revised design, I should point out before we get into the revisions, that in addition to the things that Jared mentioned, we also had a signage proposal for building lighting, but we didn't have any real comments about that, so we thought we were just addressing great alterations. The revised design that we're proposing today, one acknowledges the singularity of each facade. So Fulton Street will have projecting storefronts as it does now. South Street will make smaller scale storefronts that reflect a little bit better the fish stall scale. The Beakman is back at house scale, but that has been reduced to reflect better what's going on across the street. And Front Street is a storefront system, also the scale has been reduced a little bit. It's much more similar to the existing condition. Materials have a more mundane and humble characteristic. We're introducing corrugated metal on South Street and Beakman particularly. We're using concrete bases for the storefronts rather than the shiny black granite. And the scale is kind of heated for, it was much more harmonious with the existing building and with the historic district. On the second floor, the wall and lighting scheme is much more fully developed than it was before. Most of the windows will have metal scrim with LED lighting in front of them. And Greg Pasquarel from Shop will describe all this in more detail. With regard to the granite pavers, we went back to look at the existing condition. And the granite pavers are actually in very good condition, have been there for 30 years. And so we'd like to continue using the same paper as we're adding, not replacing. If you may, miss, spoken, there's some replacement, but mostly it's addition. We think that part of the problem in some other locations is that trucks drive on the papers and they crack up, but this is pedestrian friendly. Just go there. And there's very little.
They're granite or blue?
Did I say granite? I'm sorry. The existing, correct, yes, right now. The existing pavers are blue stone and we're proposing blue stone to expand the sidewalks. And where we expect trucks to be, which would be the loading dock, that would be done in concrete, which is the current condition. So the last thing then is to talk about Fulton Street projections, because that was the major point of discussion. The new footprint matches the existing condition. There's more revealed and we had more, the new line is scaled down a little bit. And I do want to point out two things about the existing condition, just to make it very, very clear, that the canopy that is on the building now is the original canopy and we are planning to keep it. So there's no, all the way around is going to be the same canopy. And the main issue was how will the new projecting storefronts intersect with it? I just wanted to make it very clear that the existing condition has sloped roofs with a clear story behind it that intersects with the canopy. And our proposal does something similar, except that we have a flat roof. And Greg will go through that in more detail. And let's see, these poles, just to be clear, were installed for canvas awning, but that's not part of our proposal. One last thing I'll point out, keep in mind when we get around to South Street and Beakman, there was some question about corrugated metal panels that are on the second floor. Greg will point them out. They are existing and they were part of the original design and we're keeping them on the second floor and that helps us with our second floor alterations. So I'd like to now hand this over to Greg to fill in the details.
Great, thank you, Elise.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Greg Pasquarel from Shop Architects. And we're happy to present the revised designs. I've looked through them in detail. So as Elise pointed out, basically, we have, the blue stone currently exists on this portion and this is concrete and there's concrete here. What we're proposing is to keep, make the blue stone continuous all the way around the entire block. And as we said, they are in very good condition and have been there for 30 years and the owner takes very good care of them. We just want to continue that all the way around for the uniformity sake. In the previous, this is the existing design, the way that the blue stone sort of pop, this is the blue stone pavers here, kind of pops in and out, but you can see this is the perimeter of the building. And in our proposed design, we're continuing the blue stone all the way around, but we are matching the projections exactly as they are today. So it gets that sort of in and out and indent, indent that help give it the characteristics. This is, we've taken the canopy off here, just so that you can see the elevation when you look at it. So this is the existing elevation with the kind of greenhouse sloped areas where those three projections currently stand. When we showed you the, when we proposed the project last time, this was the design, which kind of made it a little bit more uniform all the way across. We think that they were excellent comments that we received from the Commissioners about sort of keeping the various window patterns and fenestration patterns. And by matching the footprint, you get the three projections and we have the clare story above. So basically, you've got the three projections here, the clare story above that connects it to the canopy. And so again, this is the current condition here with the sloped element. This is what we had proposed last time. And what we're proposing now is that you've got the squared off box, which we think works well with the rest of the building, but we put the clare story up above that connects to the awning itself, which helps us, you know, for burbs and other issues. So that was very helpful. Here you can see some typical, this was the previously proposed storefront enclosure here. And now this is what we're doing. So it matches the pattern exactly, the footprint. We've put various fenestration patterns to sort of differentiate the three. And it's actually kind of hard to see, so we need a drawing to make it clear for you. So this is the clare story that also goes in and out, there's that relief. It comes right up to the canopy itself. And you've got these small projecting elements of the three boxes as they come out. That's very similar to what we have. The only difference is it's not a slope here. We think it works better with the existing building. Excuse me, the details, it's a sort of built up aluminum and glass storefront system in a charcoal gray. We think that the dark color will work very well against the brick as opposed to the hunter green color. And we wanted to do a sort of built up section, so it has a lot of that kind of detail and in and out that we think gives it a little bit more grittiness, if you will.
What's the dimension of the element?
You mean from here to here?
Yeah.
What is it about? It's pretty thick. It's probably four or five inches.
Four inches.
Four inches.
So like the little mountains are four inches?
Yes, and they project out. So we wanted to get that kind of level of detail when you look at it, which will cast shadows on the glass and I think.
It's not really like picture three, which is like a steel thing, which probably like a three quarter.
Yeah, well, it's hard to get the insulated glass units on the steel ones, so, but that's a little bit less, these are a little bit more. We wanted it to have some heaviness to it, but it was something that we definitely considered.
I have a correction, that's Elise Quaysbart. The mullion, the vertical piece is four inches.
Right.
And the, that's A. And this portion is more like an inch, inch and a half.
Oh, it's much less.
There you go.
Sorry, so that makes a mountain, isn't it? Which is it? Is it shadows?
The grills. It's an official.
Again, here's looking at the existing condition. This was the previously proposed, which sort of unified it all the way across. And now this is what we're talking about, so you can see how it goes in and out. You've got that pattern of windows and the clare story above.
What are the front posts and the pillars there?
Also, also the metal, yes. This is looking at it from the other direction with the revised design. Along South Street, this is the current condition, where you have the sort of roll up garage doors that are set back from the columns. You know, the lighting scheme, it sort of collects garbage, it's sort of back there. You've got a lot of sort of attachments to the building and we wanted to, you know, kind of keep the character and think about the history of the stalls, but also, you know, clean up the building a little bit when we look at it. So the existing plan goes like this, the stalls are actually gone and not here. And what we're proposing is to put the new storefront in right in front of the columns as it goes across. We have some egress requirements that are coming in here and there would be actual storefronts for retail. So now it would begin to enliven South Street, which right now is fairly dead. So here you can see the existing elevation, again, the canopy is taken off so that you can see it. These panels here and these panels here exist, they're corrugated metal and even up at this point in part as well. And this is what we proposed last time with a kind of singular unified storefront all the way across. And we heard the Commissioners' comments about sort of maintaining a pattern that recalls the sort of stalls. And so it's more almost like a series of, if you will, like the glass garage doors or segmented pieces as it comes all the way across. The other thing is that there are these two brick plasters that connect to this element on the building, but it doesn't exist over here and it doesn't exist now. And it's, and what we're proposing is to kind of match that so that it really kind of reinforces the roof line of the building. We are here in the existing, there's glass metal. Here, we're proposing to open that up a little bit more, but all of this will be corrugated metal, just changing the color. And the same thing in this element as well. So we really think it's kind of capturing more of the existing feeling of the building. Again, this is the section as it currently exists and then this is the proposed by putting the new storefront here. And some of the details, so you see the corrugated metal, we'll have the blue stone now that comes all the way around the building instead of the concrete. Here you can see, oh, and then as Elise pointed out before, we're putting concrete bases to all the columns where it meets the bottom. So we think again, a sort of more humble, grittier material rather than the granite basis. So this is now looking at that, so this is Beakman Street, this is South Street. It's really a kind of dead facade, if you will. And now you see the corrugated metal above here.
That's previously?
This is previously proposed, sorry. This was previously proposed where it comes all the way across. And then this is the new proposal where it's more sort of door-like, you see the brick coming down articulating the roof line and the window storefronts as they go around. On Beakman Street, which is really sort of the service street, we want to sort of enliven it a little bit, but we wanted to, we have to move where one of the loading docks is located. So this is the existing facade with the loading dock over here. This was the previously proposed where we had matched the sort of line of the building all the way around. But we heard the Commissioners' comments about bringing the scale down, so we brought the scale down more towards the storefront, left the infill brick at this point, you have the two loading docks, but we did want to get some entries and some life onto that street as well. So here you see the same material palette, we've got the blue stone coming around, the metal, charcoal gray metal doors, the corrugated metal wherever we have the panels, and the same, the same system. And so this is what it looks like today. This is the previously proposed with the large metal panels above. And now you can see it's much lower and smaller and more scaled to the historic neighborhood next across the street. And finally, on Front Street, this is the existing condition, so you can see there's vision glass that was up here. A lot of it has a film on it, so you can't see through it, but you can see that it has these very large openings in the brick and the storefronts along here. So we're keeping the footprint basically the same, just changing a couple of the door locations, adding some more. And then here again, you're seeing the elevation without the canopy taken. So there's the glass with the opaque film up here and then the regular storefront down here. Previously proposed, we had this very high with the metal panels up here, again, following that line all the way around with the unified storefront. And what we are now proposing is to put a spandrel glass up above here. We're taking the line around the building with this sort of mid-level metal panel area. We're inserting the louvers that are required for the functioning of the building in that zone, so they sit above the storefront glass. And then we're repairing the granite bases wherever, wherever it's needed. And so again, it's a very similar system, spandrel glass above, which we think breaks down the scale a bit much better, and then the vision glass in storefront through. And then we're carrying those elements up to sort of give it a rhythm and pattern against the horizontal band that comes across. So this is the existing view that you can see right here. That's the glass with the opaque film on. And then this is the revised design. So now it's got a spandrel glass, you've got this horizontal element coming all the way through, you've got the louvers integrated into that horizontal element, and then the vision storefront along the street here. The last thing that we wanted to talk about are the theater walls. So as you know, the theater is going on the second floor, so there are some places where the walls are just a couple feet away, sometimes they're nine feet away, seven feet away, sometimes they're as little as two foot four. And then in the corner, there's really a restaurant, which is really much more open as you look in through the glazing. So what we're proposing is basically when you have a wall that's quite close, we wanted to take a sort of metal scrim, a metal mesh, can we have the material here? And hang it behind the window. So this is the material, I can pass it around, and then we could just cast the light up on it, so it will give a kind of scrim and feeling of depth when you're looking through the window, it won't feel, it won't feel dead. There are a couple places where the window is very, very small, it's along South Street, sort of basically facing the FBR Drive. There we would just cast the light on a solid chipboard wall.
That's the location where the corrugated?
Yeah, this is where the corrugated metal panels are, if you remember, from the other facade and from the panels. We use a similar material in Barclays where it separates you when you're going across the main bridge and the entry. It works very well, you just sort of cast a light up on it and it's, it's an effective way to make a scrim that makes it feel alive and not just dead. And there's also precedent of putting sort of colored windows in historic districts. We were thinking about the Theory Building or Dynamon Firstenberg, or even at the New York Historical Society, where you could just cast a kind of soft color along those scrims in the upper levels to unify it above. Whoops, sorry. So one, like here's the one spot where you have the corrugated metal and you can see through the window at this point. Here's where you would have the theater walls that are, you know, anywhere from two foot four to nine feet behind the glazing. And again, that scrim would sit there, it could cast a color on it. And then this would be the entry to the theater, which would probably use a similar color so that it identifies how you get into the theater and you move in, this first box along Fulton Street. And that's the way we're proposing to deal with the upper levels. And so again, this is, we're not saying that it's always going to be pink. We just decided to use pink today. But you can see that there would be a kind of color for the entrance of the theater and then you would have that color here. And then here you would have the restaurant looking out towards the ships.
Some of the areas you identified playing as being the narrow area that is circulation.
Yes, some of them are circulation and some of them are egress.
Right. So for those areas, they have, as we normally occupy with people, I'm assuming?
Some of them are and some of them are really just for egress, like that hallway.
So for the ones that are, for the ones that are more normal circulation, is the intention that you would see those people inside or?
Yes.
Or you're not putting a sheetrock wall behind the scrim so that you can't see inside?
No, whenever you can, we want to make it so that you can see inside. That's our goal.
So all that purple, not all of that is backed by sheetrock?
Correct.
Oh, wait, but all of it has scrim? Except?
The red.
Except for the restaurant. But so the circulation area has the scrim even though it doesn't have sheetrock?
Correct.
So you won't really see people, you'll see scrim and maybe shadows.
Yeah, I mean, you see, I mean, we, like I said, we've used it, we used it at Barclays and you see people walk behind it and so it gets you this kind of way to look in and out, but it gives a kind of uniform greeting of the space. It doesn't look dead.
So the purpose in you getting those, of course, for the front of house areas is to create an, a formality?
It's so that when there are, when there are places, when there is a wall that's very close to the windows, it doesn't look dead. So by having a kind of scrim and the light and then the shadow behind, it gives a sense of depth. And that's, that's really.
No, I understand that, but for those areas where you can have more space, where it is used in a more regular basis as a front of house circulation area, where you are using the scrim?
We are not using the scrim in the place where it's mostly where people are generally.
So you know, the elevations is the only place that wasn't using the scrim.
The planet shows it all the way around.
Right, see, at circulation, 23 foot six, some of the top right, is that, is that a back of house area?
That's not back of house area, that's actually the manager's room.
Well, I think.
You gotta go up, if you're gonna speak, just go up to the front and identify yourself by name, please, so we get it on the record. At least complete that thought.
Gabe Randall with how to use it. So the circulation at the bottom right is an egress corridor and it's a fire rated corridor, so you can see people there anyway. The top right is manager's closets, basically, manager's offices and electric room, so that's not, there's a circulation corridor inboard of those offices, but at the wall, it's, it'd be a sheetrock wall.
Okay.
And that's where we.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, all, whole team. Further questions for the team before we do this? No more, obviously, it's a public meeting, we're ready to take a discussion. Fred, please.
To me, this building has always been defined by its extraordinary, an unusual roof and the great skirt or canopy that goes around the building. It looks rather eighties-ish maybe to us now, but I think in another 20, 30 years, it's gonna really feel like, like a great building of that era. So I think these tweakings really, which is what you're doing, are just updating it a bit, making it a little more lively, which I think the, the program now, at least at street level, has allowed you to do. And I think it's, it's being handled very well. I don't have any fault with any of it, I appreciate all the, you know, each, each segment, each street frontage, how it's been being handled, in some cases along South Street, rather dramatically changed now that the fishmongers are gone, but, so I think it's, it's all fine.
Yeah, I think this has been extremely responsive to our comments and I think this design brings back some of the variety that we expect to see from a real working market. And I think that the way of dealing with the second floor windows is reasonable and probably will be more animated than what we saw before, and so I appreciate that.
I agree. I think that the, the work done along, along the side that's showing here, I think is really much better than it was before, the use of the clear story, the variegation and the fenestration. I think it's great because it recalls much more effectively the kind of ad hoc quality that just seems less mall-y and more appropriate to an urban formerly market setting. And I think the other, the other modifications made on the other facades are good too. I would, I would, I would wish that the, the door, the facades facing South Street would actually be garage doors, but I think that's probably not gonna happen. But I think it's a good, good thought. I think the detailing's appreciated, the, the way that the mullions have been developed to give it some texture and depth, so all good. I think the scrim business at the, at the second floor is better than the last solution and, and is appropriate, although I think if they can make any efforts to, as they're developing it and getting a tenant for it, to try to make it as, increase the amount of transparency there, that would be a good thing.
Yeah, I think generally that the changes that have been made really improve its integration into the historic district and give it the qualities that we were looking for in the previous review and I'm supportive. And, you know, as I guess also Michael's last comment there, I can also support.
I agree with other colleagues that the response to the comments before where we will focus and, and that this is a really sort of fresh update take on this building and that it deserves to be approved.
Okay, good, a good process, listening, adapting, and I think this is a good, more than a good design, but an extremely appropriate response and also good for the seaport. So it's a, it's a good, you're, you know, sort of step by step beginning, you know, putting things there that are, that speak to the district, that's so critically important that people hold so near and dear, as we all know. So with that, we'll close this hearing, please. Motion, second, and Diana, please.
Okay.
Number three.
Yeah. In the matter of a binding report, Borough of Manhattan, 11 Fulton Street, South Street, Seaport Historic District, a contemporary market building designed by Benjamin Thompson and Associates and built in 1983, the application is to alter the ground floor, replace storefronts and signage. I recommend approval, finding that modifications to the building, which dates from the 1980s, will not cause the removal of historic fabric, that the proposed storefront infill and spandrel panels along the Front Street facade will fill, fill within, fit within the existing openings and will result in a treatment that is consistent with the 1980s storefront infill in this facade and the retail character of Front Street. That filling in the stalls and creating a new facade along South Street will create a street wall condition in keeping with other buildings with frontage on South Street. That the articulated framing members of the storefronts along Front Street will help to break down the scale of the large openings to better relate to the scale of storefronts historically found in this historic district. That the proposed storefronts on South Street will retain an alternating pattern of opening sizes that recalls the alternating pattern of the structural columns that defined the fish stalls. That the multi-light storefront infill along South Street will recall the roll down doors historically found on fish market buildings in the historic district. That the smaller scale of the openings along Beakman Street will be maintained and will continue to service the back of the house functions of this building. That the glazed spandrel panels at the upper portion of the storefront infill on Front Street and South Street will be obscured by the metal canopy which rings the building. That the projecting storefronts on Fulton Street are an avocation of the ad hoc quality of stacked bins and boxes that were loaded and unloaded from ships at the river's edge. That the proposed storefronts on Fulton Street will engage the canopy, strengthening the relationship between the projecting portions of the storefront and the canopy above. That the multi-light storefront configuration provide a scale to the storefronts that will relate well to the modestly scaled storefronts within this historic district. That the varied storefront designs on the different facades will recall the variety of storefronts evident when this was a working seaport. That the proposed paint color for the infill, spandrel panels, louvers and window framings will harmonize with the material palette of the building. will harmonize with the material palette of the building. That the proposed railings and louvers on the upper floors will be discreetly installed and will not diminish the architectural character of the building. That the proposed signage consisting of bracket and plate signs and letterings in the display windows are in keeping with the traditional types of signs found within the South Street Historic District. That the cumulative effect of the proposed signage will not call undue attention to these installations nor overwhelm the building. That the fixtures for the overall building lighting are minimally scaled and discreetly placed and will be only minimally visible. That pendant lighting type, type lighting fixtures will be discreetly located at the underside of canopies and will not detract from the building or streetscape. That the treatment behind the second floor window consisting of uplet metal scrims will have depth and a design that will animate these buildings and evoke a sense of activity within the space, and the applicant will work with his staff to increase their transparency. And that the modifications to the paving and sidewalks, including the use of bluestone pavers and granite gurping, will blend in with existing materials along Fulton Street and will be in keeping with the historic character of the streetscape.
All in favor? All opposed? Approved, thank you.